To allow George, Mr. Corr, to go ahead with the purchase of the new cooler to replace the one that has been installed inadequately and is not functional. And they will, uh, they will expend the funds for that situation and retain their funding and recovery from a legal aspect of this case. So I'm asking for emergency authority to go ahead with that purchase.
I'm making a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Uh, show Calvin out of your room. Uh, any more discussion on that? Ray, you got anything? You in agreement?
The floor wasn't leveling. What time is it leveled at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Calling for the vote. All in favor say so by saying aye. Any opposed? All right.
And we gonna, we gonna move on to the litigation part of it. Try to settle that thing, right?
Yes, sir.
I think our next will be mediation.
Yeah, 'cause you can win the battle and lose the war in those things.
Yes, yes. That's what I'm worried about.
Yes, sir.
That's why I was worried about the cost of the mediation. Of course, the cost of the trial's much greater, but mediation where you recover a whole lot is a war. So, anything else?
I think we covered about all that was left on there with Lada with our conversations with the attorney.
Anything else on your own situations? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. In the back?
Yeah.
Everything I had in the bag. I do have some contacts at Johnson Control on that call today.
Ten of supervisors report.
Richard, we, we are having an open house this Thursday from 3:30 to 6:00 at the, uh, new school for the community. We're gonna invite everybody to come over.
Thursday?
Yes, sir. After tomorrow.
If you get through a mediation process, that can itself be costly and doesn't necessarily end up in a resolution of the matter. It may have to go to court, which is another even more costly litigation type process. Have you ever considered the possibility of a non-trial?
Wow. I told him, wow.
Good morning. My report as of today, Dillon High School, thirty-four; Dillon Middle School, twenty-seven; Gordon Elementary School, eighteen; Alternative School, twenty-nine; Stewart Heights, six; South Elementary, thirteen; East Elementary, eight; Lada Elementary School, five; Lada Middle School, fifteen; Lada High School, eight; Lakeview Elementary School, ten; Lakeview High School, eleven. Total referrals, one hundred and eighty-four. Court is scheduled for tomorrow before Judge Sally Huggins McIntyre. I have thirty-seven cases on the docket.
We need, we need, we go have to hire an assistant before this goes. Case load, it would be too heavy. See, I'm more comfortable. I gotta talk Doug about the budget.
Is it generational with this?
Yes.
Okay. All systems having the similar problem?
Um, Marion is having it, but I don't think they're following as many as, well, I know they're not.
Some of them aren't supporting.
Right.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't even know how you curtail it.
If we can't get that parent to see the importance of education, you won't, the child will never see.
Never change it.
Well, does the parent?
Well, I don't know, never let it get before session.
Oh, we have to.
The only way you gonna attack it is if actually one of these judges put somebody in jail, which has only happened twice in my twenty-seven years.
That's always a problem a little bit. It's, it's generational. Um, you see it in those things, you know? And she was just saying, I was asking her if the parents have been, and she said, yeah. But parents aren't that much older than the children.
I have one parent tomorrow that has five children, and all five of them are on my docket. All five. Starting from South to Gordon to Dillon Middle. All five.
What, what options does the J J take? Other than attending all of which means nothing?
Um, they have to attend counseling at training behavior care. They do, they're, that is one of the requirements that they are supposed to do. Um, and a lot of them don't do that.
What happens then?
That's a violation.
Do they do anything about it?
That's what I, violations and bring them back to court again.
Court do anything about it at that point?
They do, that's, normally they're sent off. Although, um, because the system is so crowded, D J J's recommendation normally is to continue them on probation. But most of mine get sent off.
Parents need sending off, not children.
That's a good, that's one need be sent.
But that parent don't have any value for education, so.
And they are young. My parents, they are.
They had a value for it.
Well, it's, it's generational. I've been in the bail bond business for thirty years, and I, I gave it to my son, and my son's getting out children and grandchildren of the same people that I used to get out. It's like a big cycle over and over.
I asked.
They don't care.
I asked Mike Bright one day when he was the, uh, master in Atlanta, and he and I was talking, and he said, Calvin, I'm having, I'm sending, I'm sending the parents of children to jail. And some of that same crack gave me, uh, problems at school.
He said, it's just a, just a cycle.
It's a big circle. I had a problem at the school, now I'm sending them to jail.
And if you go to General Sessions Court, a lot of my babies are moving right up.
And they will. They'll go, they'll end up in prison most of the year.
Same.
And it cuts across all types of children.
Oh, yeah.
But the common denominator is the parents.
Yeah.
Uh, I spoke with, we had a meeting yesterday on one of ours at the middle school that, that Carmen has. There's a, there's a young lady who's one of the smartest students we've had come through the school system in pre-I P program, but her parents encouraged her not to come to school. They're moving.
Not to come to school?
Hmm? They want her to stay at home. They're moving to O'Reilly County. They just transferred yesterday, but that one may not show up. But that's an example of where, as a student that is bright as any we've ever had is being encouraged by the parent not to come to school.
And I bet you the parent's never been to school.
Right. You have to correct. That's the common denominator. It's not necessarily whether they're a, a good student or not, or if they're interested in school, you know, or anything like that. The common denominator is the parent does not have a high regard for education.
Right.
They don't see it as a shame.
If you got a child that has that potential.
There's no stopping. It's regenerating itself. That's why you have so many hearings. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you a question.
All right.
What parents you talking about? We talk about parents, but what parents are you talking about? You talking about grandparents? Cause some of them are the grandparents. You talking about uncles and aunts?
Well, I'm.
You talking about, immediately you talking about the parents that's right there at the aisle with, what parents are we talking about?
They're the grandparent.
Or are we talking about the parents that we produced out of our system? Are we talking about those parents? We produced these parents.
Yeah.
Those parents are producing those children. So it's failing on, not just the parents, and it's failing on all ends. So what parents are we talking about? I, I told that parent that came here with Jack, you got some four-year-olds have five or six parents before they get four. Because you, when you go through the system, you go through the Department of Social Service, you go through the Adoption Agency, you're going through all that. So, you know, so you're going through foster parents. So what parents are we talking about when we start talking about parents? My mother and father raised me, but there may have been some parents, children that was raised by ten different people. So where do we start? When we start talking about parents now? Because some of these kids are left way out there, even when they're born. When they leave their hospital, they don't go home with a parent, with a mother and a father sometimes, because they've been subjugated, abused, they are way over here in Florence somewhere. And then by the time they get used to that parent, they move back over and dealing with somebody else, or they move to marry with somebody else. So it's not a simple solution.
Right.
It's a, it's a fact of the matter, not a matter of fact.
And Tim's right. Some of our most difficult situations are the transient parents. One of those classes we talked about where, where they're constantly moving from county to county, state to state, is a life cycle for them.
Yes. And that's like when some of my kids.
There's no stability there for them.
Is there a switch?
No. Cause some of my kids are placed in placement, and while they're in placement, a lot of them are doing well, but then, once they complete that, they're sent right back.
With that same guard.
Exactly.
And could you see whenever, I mean, is it, are you able to determine whenever they move back into the home?
Yeah.
You can see it immediately, really.
Because things are filed again for me to bring them back to court.
Absolutely. I have a, uh, young man in my church. He's seven years old, and he's been with four different, well, so-called parents. The one that he with now, with now, is not really a.
That's gonna be trouble.
The standard, the whole, uh, true parent.
Hard to figure out who's keeping doing that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. ATAC Center Director report. While he's coming, I'm gonna brief you, uh, try to update you on the workforce, uh, work center, training center. We are, uh, Doc Kirby, you can help me with this, cause he's been involved in all the meetings. We are and have met with the state of South Carolina, the South Carolina Ready Workforce, what's it called?
Ready S C.
Ready S C. And Northeastern Tech people, Jerry and his people, uh, Representative Hayes, and all the people at the table to discuss putting this training program into place. We are progressing on that project. Uh, we're looking at timelines and when we need to, to get the training program up and running, and who's gonna be involved at what level, and which students are gonna be addressed to attend. Work keys testing has been, I don't know if we, we discussed that one much more, Ken. I sent an email out yesterday that there is, uh, Margie is being gracious enough to handle work keys testing at Northeastern Tech one day or not?
One day, one day a week.
One day a week for them, and we'll do hours at the vocational center at Northeastern Tech anytime we have a group that needs it. Also, Doc Ed will be handling it on Friday at eight o'clock in the morning.
It's eight thirty, thirty.
And, uh, they will test there also. The, the one fact I'd like to discuss is we've already graduated, I know we're dealing with, uh, what, a hundred and fifty students that have already taken the work keys test? How many of you got?
All, all.
And he's got, I notice over a hundred in Dillon, that have already cleared this test and taken. And already under that situation. We're getting bombarded at all agencies by applicants to take that test. Let me say this, that test does not guarantee you a job. That is one step in a massive process. Uh, the next step is getting by law enforcement to background tests and drug tests. Then when you clear that, you've got a few more obstacles in, in front of you.
Got to weed a bunch of them.
Okay, yeah. But, uh, but we are, we are filling the pipeline with a lot of applicants that have cleared that one obstacle. Now there are many more obstacles to clear. Uh, we also met with the Personnel Director for Wyman Gordon, and, uh, she was very informative about the process. She's only been with them how long?
A month.
And, uh, is working on the training program with all of our people and Wyman Gordon as to what the training program should or shouldn't be. And, uh, there's gonna be a, a major initiative very shortly, um, to hook into purchasing equipment to do this training program on. It's called CNC equipment.
Yes.
I'm gonna let these two explain that, cause I know nothing about that. CNC to me is a bank. So I'm gonna let them discuss this equipment and how that, how that process will take place. But, uh, acquiring that equipment will be our next involvement in the process. I've spoken to Representative Hayes on the allocation from the state. Uh, that is in process, and we hopefully will hear from that, but it will be easily into July before we hear about that, right? When your budget comes in.
Stop it. I'm concerned about Tim's situation. What do we do? How do we change that? How do we change it with those children? I mean, we're letting them down somewhere down the line.
I think that's gonna take a many-day conference, that, that we're gonna have to address so many issues with that, and, and we need to, but these guys behind you probably.
But they got their hands full.
I'm sure, but, but if anybody's got their finger on it, yes, they, cause they're dealing with it every hour.
And we're dealing with, we provide parenting workshops. We, we, we have to by law, so we're, we're into that, trying to work with these parents and even before they get recommended on attendance, we have a process at each of the schools that we have to follow to bring these parents in, encourage them, and try and get them in program, so.
Who are the parents more inclined to listen to? Because you've got to rebound their, their heart and their mind and their commitment and their willingness to do what has to be done, and who, who are they more willing to listen to along those lines?
You know who they gonna listen to?
Who?
They gonna listen to that child. And they don't wanna listen to nobody that's telling them the truth. They wanna just listen to that child.
You just said what they need.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they wanna listen to, and that's the part.
And you said that when you talked with some of these children.
Yeah, they, they wanna.
And it's amazing, I mean, the language you, you give to the children.
Cause here, the children ain't gonna do no wrong, you wrong if you run that facility, and you're in the right way, and you tell them how things supposed to go, they still wanna listen to that child.
They support.
Child, children run the households now.
They support kids and.
But we're wasting the time with the parents.
Tim, well, we have to by law.
By law, you got to go through them, man.
But we've got some, Tim's right, in our most challenging cases, it does seem that the child is as much running the family and dictating the rules than the parents are. However, we've got a lot of great grandparents, grandmothers, single parents that are raising children, doing a great job under difficult circumstances. Those are the ones that take advantage of our parenting program and after-school services, any, any type of thing we, we offer them, special services and things like that. But it's that smaller group of, of.
Recalcitrant and controlling children.
Yes, sir.
And if it's recalcitrant and controlling children, then what we need is to establish a series of boot camps for schools, for them. And they'd be, they'd be structured like boot camps, and they'd be run like military camps, and they'd be getting, getting up at five thirty.
What they do with the parents? What, what we need the boot camp for, so the parents?
It would, I mean, really. The boot camp would be residential.
It was a boot camp years ago. It was at your home. You've got to, before you ever win, and if you fall.
Well, you didn't look, well, my house, you didn't look me in my back to your parents' house. You've got to get the same. That's a totally different generation now. I, I see children just screaming back at their parents.
Yeah.
My daddy would have knocked me down.
I wouldn't have, I, I'd come up, might have get myself up off the floor, by the time I could get it back shut.
But that's a totally different, uh, different generation now.
Can, can we go back to the topic? If y'all would like all, all the conference today, meeting with everybody involved, I'd be glad to put that together. That's gonna be a long discussion, I can tell.
Sorry, Rick.
And very.
Let's finish up on the training, so you understand they're, they're basically two-faces to the training. One is training that will be directed to people already at work that are looking for better jobs that need to be retrained, people that are underemployed, that are part-time, that are looking for full-time, that will need specific training, and people that are unemployed that will be looking for training to, to apply for these jobs. That's some of the short-term training that will be going on, that will be taking place within the next year. The plan for Wyman is bringing in about twelve or thirteen people, uh, that will get the plant started, and once it gets constructed, then they will be hiring what they call grinders. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen dollar an hour people that will be doing some of the welding, some of the grinding type things. And what we've been told by Wyman is that there are two training areas that these folks need to be trained in. That is Megatronics, and the other is CNC machinists. Those are the two critical things they need. That's what Northeast Tech will help us with, and hopefully Department of Commerce and all these other folks that are involved from the state level, to train and retrain adults. The, the heart blood, the, the heart line, and the real heart of the program is long-term for Wyman, in that the school systems want to become like Greer High School is for BMW. That they've got a steady pipeline of fifty, sixty students every year coming out of Greer High School that are doing apprenticeships, that are doing mentors with BMW while they're in the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. They're getting training in school, they're getting dual certificate, uh, for courses, not only for high school, but getting certificates for, uh, college work, for, for technical college work. And BMW selects these apprentices, they wanna hire them on, so they have a steady supply of replacement employees in Greer. The real heart blood, again, is gonna be the long-term training that we can provide in the school system, that will have a number of graduates that will be coming out already trained, and basically, we hope that Wyman will hire them on and complete the rest of the training they need specifically for them at the job, will support them in that. So that's more of a long-term plan, where we've got to come together and make sure that we've got Megatronics being offered for dual credit for our high school students, and also the CNC machinists. And, and that's what they're letting us know, that those are those grinder-type jobs. The more, the higher-paying jobs, the engineering jobs, those kind of things, quite frankly, they're, we hope that they'll be coming here and hiring current people in Dillon County that have those skills, that are working in Lumberton and other places, because we need to get some folks in Dillon County these first jobs, so we can prove to folks that we have people in Dillon County that have skills to do this, and they can be examples for other people, young folks, to aspire to, yes, I wanna make sixty, seventy thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year too. But we've got to go through all these, these, um, steps, uh, sled checks, drug checks, work keys, passing that, and all the training that goes along with it. So it, it is a long process, but it is achievable, uh, as long as we get the training package together. So we, we've asked for a meeting to get a training schedule down, that, that will be two components. One for the adult population, one to plan for the school population, so we can have a steady stream of available workers as, as the plant grows and, and starts to expand.
Well, it's a shame to me that we had these, I don't remember whether it was four or five of these young people that were up here not that long ago wanting work.
They've got applications.
They're, they're.
We've got them in.
These old five, you know, that were.
Exactly.
But, but, you know, there, there's some there, they, they want it. You know, it's just like John said, I guess, you're just.
Well, we've got, we've also got to set a system up to track people. As they apply, then we've got to track them while the jobs come open, that we may not can get them in Wyman to begin with, but we may can get them a job at Harbor Freight, knowing that they wanna get a better job at Wyman. So it's, it's part of this tracking system that Northeast Tech and, and the school systems and, and Ready S C will help us do to, to say, okay, Wyman's getting ready to hire twenty, thirty more people, well, we've got all these people that have got applications, gone through this training, they're working elsewhere, waiting for these jobs to come open, and then we gotta let them know that the opportunities are there. So we, there's a, there's a lot we gotta do, but it's very achievable for us to do this. It's a great challenge for Dillon County for us to do this.
John, what is Melvin Ronnie?
Jerry, I want you to explain what that is.
And do we have anybody qualified to teach it? Yeah, we are teaching it.
Yeah.
We're just teaching Melvin Ronnie. It's Dillon, it's Dillon with the machinery, kind of sometimes with robotics, getting into that, and where, uh, students come in, being trained how to, I want you to try and tell this machine how to do this.
Kind, kinda like a combination of industrial maintenance, what it used to be, and robotics, and then the technology that makes all that happen too.
And CNC is just numerical controllers, which we've been teaching that for years. So we're online with it, we're ready to go.
But we don't have the equipment.
We got a little bit of the CNC, but it's not the most modern of today, what they need, but we have been teaching, and the blueprint reading, we've been, our speech already going through that.
What about grinding and welding?
I know we got. Well, we got the welding and the grinding, but now this grinding is gonna be a lot more, how would you say? Precise. Yeah. It's gotta be downright.
But our challenge is to getting them in that mode of that initial grind welding, one oh one, one oh two. And if we can get them placed in an apprenticeship, then as a high school student, then Wyman can show them the specific details, and hopefully, if they're, they can show that they're a good enough worker, that they'll be hired when they graduate from high school, and Wyman would pick up that specific training on their machinery.
Richard? Did y'all hear that the big Esau plant in Florence is closing?
Yes, it did.
Six hundred jobs. About over half of those are welders.
Yep.
Did you, have you mentioned to the board that this is not their first attempt at coming into South Carolina? I mean, everybody's saying whatever, but maybe they learned from their first trip. They went, they opened one in Chesterfield.
That was Greer.
It was Chesterfield.
Was it Chester?
Yeah, Chester County.
Chester.
Chesterfield, Chesterfield.
Didn't make it. Didn't get to work.
And didn't get the support from the state government either.
Well, it looks to me like a lot of support they can handle from state government.
The climate's changed now for business support. Absolutely.
I would, I would say they opened all the doors possible at the state level.
They've got everything they can to come to Dillon County, and we gotta try to get these kids and adults ready to, to go to work.
And I think the other thing folks don't know, that this is the first startup Wyman's ever done. They're a very established plant in Massachusetts, a plant that's been there over a hundred years. And they've never ventured out and started a new plant, so this is something new for them too, as it is new for us, but we're working real hard with them to make sure that, that it, that we don't drop the ball at any level.
There are ongoing meetings and discussions, and we're involved at every level I know we can get involved, but it will happen, I, I, you know. But the, the one issue that we're gonna have is funding for this new equipment to train on. Uh, I will tell you, I do not see that progressing before the first of July into any area. Uh, our budget year starts July first. To do it right now means we'd have to pay it off in two months, and that's impossible to get it done and paid off. It would be ridiculous.
Yeah, cause those CNCs.
Ah.
Those CNCs.
So we will be in the discussions between now and July, how we're gonna fund the purchasing of this equipment to train on. I think it's, they're called CNC machines. Now, um, there've been people out there looking and bidding and talking and discussing this equipment. Jerry has allocated space at the Technology Center for this training program, for this equipment, and I, quite out of pocket, agreed to rewire that facility, that room, to adapt to this new equipment, cause he doesn't have the right power to take the equipment, so I issued an emergency order to go forward with rewiring, making that room energy correct for this equipment, correct? So, anyway, there's a lot going on, and a lot of people involved with it and doing a great job getting us there. But, uh, the rubber will meet the road in about two years, I'm afraid. Where are we gonna be at at that time?
And I, I've already been online with Wyman Gordon, and they have told me they'd be willing, interested in working with us on apprenticeships for our students. We've already got, laid the groundwork for that already. And I know we can do it. You've heard me talk about all the mechanics so much. Uh, we've got that pipeline, trying to build that pipeline up now to fill the needs. I've got two dealerships now, and Florence arguing over one student. They want him that bad because these kids now are coming, leaving us from your high schools, coming through us, leaving us with more ASE certification than a full-time mechanic has in different dealerships in Florence. And they, they really want these kids. So it's, it's really, the pipeline, if we can fill it up, we'll be, we're not gonna It's really, the pipeline, if we can fill it up, we'll be a lot better shape than all the cancers, and we can do it with this also, it's gonna take us a little while, we can do it. A little bit of news from the ATAC Center, our CNA students has completed their clinical, they're through with that, they finished up at Pines, they're now preparing for the State Board Exam, which we'll give that to them in a few weeks. They're really excited. Cosmetology seniors have finished their first portion of their state exams, and everybody has passed it. Their first one, there's two portions of that, and they passed the first portion, they'll go in another week or so to the beach to finish the second part. And our nail technology class, we're fixing to get it two weeks, our first group of students will be, they'll take their state board exam. These students will leave us with, those who pass will leave with their state certification, they can get right into work. Some of them may be, they would work while they're finishing up high school, so this is some things we're looking for.
How many are there?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, brand-new program.
How many CNA students you have?
Oh gosh, that's about eighteen. I kind of fudge on that a little bit, because you can't have eight per teacher, and we have to hire another teacher when we go to nursing home, so we have to work a different angle to get all on in.
And they'll be, when will they take the state?
We hope in a couple of weeks, we had a little lady give us a schedule, she'll come to us and do it at our center to keep us, and make sure all our kids get to Florence.
I hope you send someone to make, put an application, that we need some CNA.
We'll do it, we sure will, we're ready to go. We had a doctor here yesterday, hired, yesterday hired one of our CNA students for next year.
Where are we at with the EMT program?
We're working on it right on, we're not having the number, but now we're saying they won't go into that. They're just backing off on me, not enough to really put a stamp.
Critical needs there if I just can.
While I get to talk to them, what they're gonna be required to do, they begin to back down.
Well, it ain't easy.
It's not easy. And we mentioned Megatronics, Mr. Bullard, Jerry Bullard teaches Megatronics. He has been battling this for five years, he always wanted to win the welding rodeo, and they, our students wanted to win the welding rodeo, and it's not first place. And I've got to share a little bit with you, this is put on by ESOP now, but I mean, another company's already coming up, and said they're gonna take it over. The competition took place at Francis Marion University's Arts International in downtown Florence, it was an eight-hour event involving professional and amateur competitors all over PD, teams of artist welders competing against time and one another, and when you come up, you bring, we give you all our equipment, we had our Harbor Freight equipment sitting there and everything, and we put up a tent, and our students were given a pile of scrap metal, this is yours, go at it, and they have items they have to make. The ATAC, Megatronics program was awarded, and we won it, they were awarded five thousand dollars free equipment, ESOP, to our center, and the boys were real excited over that. Everyone of them got a special time to weld and have them, and then when they finished the sculpture that they do, well, it's sold, public auction there, ours, the boys, theirs was sold for five hundred fifty dollars, picked it by a couple at General Lake. And, but that money goes back into the welding program at Florence during the day. And I've got permission, I'm gonna mention these boys, they're real excited. One was Roger Scott, Lakeview, Dawson King, Dillon High School, John Mathay, Ladder, Nicholas Cook, Ladder, and Bobby Rogers, Ladder. And these boys, when they get off the bus, since, how they get changed in their work clothes so quick, I believe they're changing when they're walking, but they go.
They're excited on it.
And they were excited, and that is, that's the way it is with Mr. Bullard's class, that's the way to go. And that's, I'm glad he's gonna be the one doing the Megatronics, and the CNC, because he's a, well, of course, he's the whole airplane man, and he's very, very finite, he's cut down to the, he's just right down to the nitty-gritty on it, measurement.
What's his name again, Jerry?
Jerry Don Bullard, he's a ladder high school graduate years ago.
Excellent airplane pilot.
He's, yeah, just doing good. And the project was actually for ladies, they called it a gardening chair, and they had to make it, and it could be used for the ladies when they're in the garden, and also when you're sitting around just resting. If you'd like to see it, that's it, I'll pick you up, what is it. And they had to, it all come from scrap metal, here it is, this is yours, go at it. And they had a best time, and it had to be down to the measurements and everything, just like the blueprint of that. Now, the next item in the final, final, will be alternative school. We're holding it on, doing well, if you can call it, doing well. I enrolled us up a little bit in middle school, and we're working with the students getting ready for the testing, so that's one of the reasons itself, we're going well with them. And Mr. Rogers showed up the other day, and he said to himself, he was amazed, everybody was wide-eyed and going at it, everybody engaged in what they were supposed to be doing.
Why you own alternative school? On the request of the superintendent, we are discussing an alternative way to fund alternative school, and separate it from dependence on the districts funding it. How much are you getting from the districts on the alternative?
It's fourteen dollars and ten cents per day per child.
And the program's costing us two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, last year's two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars.
How much?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five. Obviously, that funding is coming, some of it's coming from the school districts, District Three and Four. We're discussing with Representative Hayes an alternative way of funding that program, not making it dependent upon taking those funds away from the school districts to do that. And we're not there yet, I can say that. We are addressing it, and probably will be addressing it as soon as early next year to come up with an alternative way to fund it. Any comments on that?
The main problem, Mr. Rogers, we're facing is, one of the big expenses is getting children there.
Transportation.
We don't have to provide transportation for these kids unless they're special needs.
They want a gut.
But then some of them want a gut.
Some, most of them.
Dr. Kirby, I'll call you sometime, Mr. Rogers, I need you to help pick this one up. The problem is, we're going from almost the state line all the way to Sellers, and all the way to the state line around Lakeview, and sometimes we'll go, and, yes, and sometimes you'll go, and you sit in the yard, but, well, he's not going today, or she's not going today, and we've made that trip.
Can you call him ahead of time?
I'm gonna answer the phone, they see that Dillon County, that's.
Yeah, and the other issue beside transportation is, we need to have a serious conversation about making a year long, because we've got some students that need a year long, and that's a little, that's another cost factor about.
We opened up two extra, two weeks earlier this year, because I think Mr. Rogers had some, we had to get in real quick.
They came back a day at regular school.
The importance of this program gives superintendents an alternative to expulsion. That's about the only alternative to expulsion. It comes to that time, it's alternative school or where? Street. And he, they have saved a number of them, I mean, it is amazing, the students that are coming out of alternative school, some of the success stories that I hear, and I'm sure you've heard, so it is a very important program.
If you want to see learning going on, stop by there, because they got some of our finest.
And I'm not gonna identify his name, but one of those welders is one of the success stories out of there. He was in and out of that program a while back in middle school.
Sometimes.
As you just talked about, they won that award.
If they find their niche, and it's not in the classroom, can be in welding, it can be in cosmetology, it can be in whatever, if they excel, they, they'll do a good job if you can ever get their attention or get them focused in on something.
Well, I can share this with you, I know we're getting along, I had a young lady in alternative school, and I talked with her, and I, we interview every woman that come in with parents, and I promised myself, if you do well in alternative school, then I'll let you go back, because they had to meet our approval to go back. When you get ready to come as a regular student, you tell me what you want. This young lady as well, she come out to me, said, Mr. Rick, I'm coming back, I want to go in the nursing. I said, all right. You got it, and I put her in. She finished, she's now working for a doctor's office here in Dillon, and the doctor is now sending her back to school for more education. That's an alternative school, alternative school time. They just had to find, as Mr. Rogers did a little quick, and it's not always in that classroom at high school.
Off you go, away from it.
Yeah, get them away from it. And I have had some parents just say, they'll talk to Mr. Rogers, Kirby says, I want my child going to alternative school, because they cannot handle the big crap. And they'll do that sometimes.
Yeah, some of them can't handle a thousand.
Anyway, it is a very, very important program to us, and that's why, upon request from the superintendents, I have met with Representative Hayes, and we're carrying all those conversations, is there a better way to fund this situation? Any questions? Anything else? Thank you very much. Business Manager Report.
If you look at your cash balances, this time of year, we're doing good. I talked about the money that, if you look down to BBNT Project Fund, that's the money that Stewart's looking at as far as having USDA pay out the interim loan, and what you would need to do, if you want to look and see how much we have left, you'd need to subtract that two point six million dollars from, at our own risk, and three hundred and fifty thousand from Ladder, so about three million from that, would leave two million.